How are you?
I haven't seen you, where are you in?
And it just, uh, I was saying, having to get back in the room.
You're still trying to build space? Yeah, I've been thinking about you.
I don't think you've managed back.
How long are y'all married?
Forty-nine years.
Oh, my gosh.
Over a lifetime.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Yeah, yeah. You doing well?
Uh, yeah, yes, we're doing good. So, still making it. I'm working younger.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure.
That means that Ashford City Schools is treating me right?
Well, somebody is.
Listen, everybody says that, why can't I just be, yeah, good, it's all good.
We're all in here.
It is, and in here, it's hard too.
Well, I know, but can't be here and get there.
Yeah, that's true, that's true, but it's good to see you. All right, thank you. How you starting?
Can you do yourself?
First year, three days.
Can you give him what he wants?
Something missing, somebody who's missing.
Who did it? Memorial for her.
When you planted it, watched it grow up?
No, we lived there, lived there almost, well, forty years now, but, uh, little thing was a...
Yeah, don't be sad about it.
You know, that's what moves our mouth. I mean, we have walked through miles to get to my place. And appreciate about this time.
I bet that was sweet, that was touching.
Yeah. And they are, too. Well, I guess. He's guilty. He said, "I wouldn't be in the business if..."
Well, that was good value. It had to be, it had to be. It goes backwards.
Great seeing you.
Yes, yeah, pet shopper.
Yeah. Yes, sir? Yeah, I think so.
Good morning, we will get started in just a minute here, to get everyone to be with. Great, well, welcome everyone, and thanks for coming to this, um, meeting of the Early Childhood Education and Development Committee of Buckingham County. Newly formed, the early steps, we'll, we'll talk more about the process and kind of where we are in it. But one of the early steps is for commissioners who are making up this committee to, to gather input from community partners, share plans, um, and plan together about future collaborative opportunities. So this was an important milestone in the, in the early life of the Early Childhood Committee, um, to meet with representatives from Buckingham County, Ashford City School Systems, because people share so much in terms of goals and vision and activities around supporting early childhood. And, um, the format for this session will be that, once we do some introductions and welcome, I'll go through a phone review to share information about what the committee has come up with so far. Um, we'll ask for some input, feedback about those early plans related to both the committee and the fund. And then, there are a series of questions, suggested questions for potential discussion, where commissioners can brainstorm topics that we might want to talk through together and really share about. Um, and obviously, trying to give a chance for either of you to have any information that you, uh, that you'd like to share with commissioners. So, my name is Rachel Magard, and I'm the Strategic Partnership Director for Buckingham County, um, working on a lot of different kinds of community collaborations and community initiatives and grant programs related to the county's strategic priorities, of which, early childhood education is one. Um, and maybe we go around the room and introduce, um, including, uh, guests, and we have a session right after this with where commissioners are engaging the, uh, representatives from Paschal Club of Preschool Planning Collaborative, and some of those participants arrive, um, early, uh, so they can be listening on this conversation as well. So, quicker on the room, um, we'll have a welcome from our commissioners, and then I'll go through some of our prepared content and get that all the way so that we can have, uh, the bulk of our time for discussion.
My name is Rashida Mee Dings, and I'm the Supervisor for Community Engagement.
Hi, I'm Dr. Linda Weiner, I'm a current member of the North Carolina Childcare Commission and work with local, uh, childcare programs here at the community.
I'm Rochelle Whitney, President and CEO of Runder Center for Early Learning.
I'm John Dewell, Chair and Board for Runder Center.
I'm Dawn Nussel, and I'm the Preschool Director with Ashford City Schools.
Good morning, Terrence McCow, Ashford City Schools Assistant Assistant.
Morning, Martha Guyton, Vice Chair, Ashford City Schools.
Good morning, Thomas Stanford, Ashford City Schools Board Chair.
Good morning, Denise Patterson, Superintendent, Ashford City Schools.
I'm Involuntarily Superintendent, Buckingham County Schools.
Good morning, Suzanne Swimmer, Assistant Superintendent, Buckingham County Schools.
I'm Jennifer Reed, Director of Elementary Education for Buckingham County Schools.
Morning, I'm Trish Wall, Deputy Director for Human Services and Economic Services Department.
Good morning, Sam Love, Buckingham County, Intergovernmental Relations and Economic Board.
Jerry Rice, Video Man.
Uh, Robert Presley, District Three, County Commissioner, and I'm very proud, I wanna learn all I can here today, so I want everything that y'all can to help me feed my mind here.
Jasmine Beach Ferrari, District One County Commissioner, and just echoing what Robert said, I think we're just so passionate about this issue, um, and really hopeful that the introduction of this new funding stream can be one more, kinda, uh, hopefully accelerant, as we look at ways to significantly expand access to high-quality early childhood education. And recognize the expertise and the daily experience that y'all are, um, having in the field, and, and today is really about listening to ideas. We, we've done a lot of these public work sessions and have had a chance to really get educated and become pretty familiar with, I think, some of the structural systems challenges, why it's been hard to grow, but today, I really hope we can hear a lot about what y'all envision, um, what, what's possible, and how the county can support, um, the work y'all are doing, the visions and ideas that you have. Um, so, also eager to learn, um, and, and eager to sort of have that sort of forward pointing, looking at the horizon line of what, what can we do in, what, in ten years from now, what can we say about what's happening for, for, you know, these kids in our community, um, and the kind of collaborations that are appealing. So, thank you all for sharing your time, I know how busy y'all are.
And, um, we expect, um, Commissioner Whitesides to join us as well. Couple of housekeeping items, um, the restrooms, you may find locked, if you do, there's a...
There are not, man.
For the moment. We have other tenants in the building that they come behind us and lock, if you need the restroom, you find it locked, there are keys hanging by the door, um, just as you enter this conference room. I have parking, uh, validation for anyone who parked in the deck, that you can scan out using, make sure you have, uh, gotten on one of the sign-in sheets so that we can follow up with you, and keep you posted, um, after this session, and capture the information in our minutes. Um, and I think, oh, materials, please feel free to take back extra materials, uh, and let me know if you'd like electronic copies. These slides, um, quick agenda, um, the purpose of our meeting, um, our commissioners did a great job framing it around this big, open and opportunity to share and listen. Um, the rest of the content in these slides is a reminder of, of the framing that we're working within, this is the strategic priority for Buckingham County, the commissioners adopted that, uh, a little bit over a year ago, December, uh, of twenty seventeen. The content after this will be reflected in the handouts, it's all consistent. So, the committee was formed as a part of that resolution that the Board of Commissioners passed in December of twenty eighteen, um, establishing the Early Childhood Education and Development Fund. In order to get that fund up, up off the ground, they really wanted to have a focus group, a subcommittee of commissioners, along with some members of the public and the community joining on that committee, to help guide the development implementation, to make, uh, both policy and funding recommendations to the larger Board of Commissioners. Two out of three items on the purpose of the committee are about engaging, having dialogue with community partners, so this is something that we've heard about here from commissioners, it's, it's critical. Al Whitesides, Jasmine Beach Ferrari, and Robert Presley, uh, we've got together a couple of times before me as we look at potential structures and bylaws for how this committee can work, and had a lot of conversations about input, how do we, um, invite other members of the community to the, to the structure of the committee to help guide the decision and the recommendations that come out of the committee for commissioners. There's a flyer in your handout, um, we have opened up, Buckingham County is taking applications for people to join that committee. So when you think about the kind of hierarchy of community engagement, our level of participation, this is the most, uh, participation that, uh, somebody can really join, um, we do not have a meeting schedule set, sometimes when people are thinking about joining a committee, that's one thing to, with my availability. It depends on the, the depth of nine and what their, their calendar looks like, there's gonna be heavier meetings at the outset, and then maybe it will slow down to a less often meeting cycle, or maybe it will be heavier during funding time, later another time. It's all to be determined, um, but the, the, there are three members of the commission, and then six members of the public, someone representing, uh, business community or economic, economic development community, someone who represents funder or community investment, someone who is a parent, someone, um, who may work as a pediatrician or in the medical, uh, profession and servicing young children, someone from the field of higher education, such as a professor, and someone who's a retired leader in the field of early childhood education. There we are. So, I mentioned two parts, the committee and the fund, the purpose of the fund is to advance that strategic priority of the Board of Commissioners, um, which is ensuring, um, access and opportunity to thrive for all children in their first two thousand days, and early care and education is a critical part of that. These strategic goals will be what you see if you were to pull up that resolution from back in December of twenty eighteen, when the commissioners established the fund, with one tweak, one thing that I revisited as staff, as I was hearing from community partners, um, was, is this about pre-K, or is this about all of early childhood care and education? And so, the, the language in item two, is expansive enough to include anything within that early childhood education field, um, with an emphasis on pre-K, as you might remember, as the county really, um, ramped up its efforts around these issues a couple of years ago, pre-K was an early area of focus, and as we talked specifically with the school system, we know that's one of the areas that we want to focus on as well. So the idea of expanding both, um, access and affordability to high-quality care, um, that we know because, uh, the challenges within the system, also means working on system-level issues, such as workforce, and so workforce, um, is one of the areas of focus, that's the focal, supporting that career track, so that we can have early educators in those classrooms and in staff to sort of... And finally, making sure that, um, any programs or system, uh, changes that are implemented have an eye to being responsive to the needs of the members of our community. We hear from care providers that the, uh, kiddos they're serving have more and more complex needs within the classrooms, that families are, um, pressured by all of the kinds of things that we, uh, might have reflected in our other strategic priorities, lack of limited affordability in housing, um, addiction, opioid prices, many of these other issues are different, and so, trying to have a responsive system, um, not just ramping up slots without thinking about affordability, not working on affordability, without thinking about quality, and not working on any of that, without that broader system context, and thinking about, uh, services that are responsive to the needs of the families and the children that they serve. This is also from the, um, resolution, funding priorities, new classrooms, more children, workforce development strategies, scaling up effective programs, and finally, supportive services, that's that responsive work. Commissioners have taken some discussion to the, to the early first application process, and don't wanna set limitations on who can be eligible to apply, this is a little different because you're not saying it must be a nonprofit organization only, or it must be a public organization only, um, any organization type may be eligible to apply. One note is that as we have consulted with our attorneys, um, and looked at the language in the general statutes around investments in capital, um, we are taking the guidance to limit capital investments, and we are wanting this new fund to public organizations only, and so, that could potentially be in the school system, and so, would that be the area that we're talking about today?
And if I could just add a quick footnote there, we've had a battle with the school government and several of their corporate peers who are on the leading edge of, uh, figuring out how to significantly expand access, and are in an interesting place where the statutes don't explicitly address the nuances of this issue. Um, so like Durham County, like McFlumberg County, we're sort of trying to feel our way through that landscape, um, there aren't, uh, clear court rulings on some of these issues, so, kind of, um, trying to strike a balance, I think, of, uh, being true to the spirit and letter of the statutes, and also recognizing that, um, it would be great to have some additional guidance, uh, at the state level, um, which would hopefully expand the ways that we could be at the local level supporting early childhood education. So, happy to, I've been very in the lead on that, and happy to have anyone who'd like to talk further, but that's just a bit more context on, um, on, on that sort of provisionary old pathway, I'm making.
And we are also wanting to note that multi-year funding will be considered, because this is the establishment of a new fund, it's outside of the county's general fund, which is an annual appropriation or annual budget, commissioners anticipate that resolution was, um, the board would invest three point six million dollars in, really, at a certain growth rate into the fund, uh, but it's a multi-year fund, meaning, um, we can make commitments at the time. And when changing systems and innovating and expanding, it takes all the work, I think, in many cases. Attentive timeframe? The, um, here we are in February, having community engagement sessions, we've got, these two back-to-back this morning, um, and looking at, um, an idea of doing a public, community-wide engagement session, um, as well as, the committee application has opened up, these are due March fifteenth, um, we hope to see a funding application come out in the next couple of weeks, um, giving, with a deadline, um, sometime in April. Um, all of this being designed so that commissioners can put some early funding on the ground for FY twenty, which is our first year that begins to run in twenty nineteen. So, that's a run-through of the information, this is back to just why we're in the room today, um, and I would open the floor to what you're thinking, what some of the information is that you brought up before you got through today, like I wanna make sure that we definitely come to this, and commissioners have some questions, and they're asking what, first, open format, looking from, uh, guests, what?
We've started having some discussions with, um, when we look at what we offer in Buckingham County Schools, we have a couple of different partners, and we have, at our community high school, for example, we have, um, opened a new facility in Southwestern as our partner in that, um, childcare facility, and as we redid our building, have a beautiful new space, and parent access is easy, so that apartment is working beautifully. We also have Headstarts in fifteen, we have fifteen Headstart classrooms throughout our elementary, so again, another great apartment.
Do they have fifteen locations or fifteen classrooms?
Fifteen classrooms, fourteen locations, and certainly have, we would love to have, uh, a Headstarter or preschool in every one of our elementary schools because of the academic and social-emotional, um, that helps with our children in that pipeline to kindergarten in those first two thousand days. We also have two of the high schools that, um, in terms of workforce development, we have students that take early childhood in one and two, and then we have a childcare center in three high schools that families can, um, opt to have their children in that setting, and that works beautifully as well, but again, it's for a small number of students, but in, in thinking about workforce development, that's where we need to go, we need to find ways to, um, have students in scholarship kinds of programs so that they go and get the BK training, and then come back and work in Buckingham County in the childcare developments, and staffing is a big process in the early childhood world.
And I would second that for sure, we've talked about it in the past, the, um, just for kindergarten teachers, as well as qualified assistants and lead teachers who don't have to have a kindergarten education, but definitely supporting, um, interested graduates and going on to earn their BK, but also, maybe leveraging some more opportunities locally for people to earn that degree, I think would be wonderful. There are fewer people going into the field of education, and far fewer people going into kindergarten education with universities closing their programs, um, and with that being required, component of many of our funding sources, we might have space, we might have children who need the, the slots, but we don't have teachers who need those.
If you're a kindergarten teacher, if you have a BK degree, are you going to choose to work in an early childhood facility at one salary range, or work in a public school kindergarten at another salary range, there's a pretty big difference.
I just get a clarifying question to both systems, um, if a public school houses a pre-K program or a, um, early childhood program, is there a scenario in which a teacher could become an employee of a school system and have a salary benefit structure that mirrors what a K-six, K-five teacher has? So that is the Ashford City Schools model, that all of our classrooms, um, everybody, all of the staff in all of our classrooms in our entire preschool program are employees of Ashford City Schools, and the teachers are paid on the teacher's salary schedule, our assistants are paid on the classified, um, salary schedule, so our, our staff are getting those benefits. It is still difficult to find people who want to be kindergarten teachers or who have earned that degree, um, North Carolina is forty-sixth in the nation, last checked for teacher salaries, so while that salary is often better than what they'll find in other settings, it's still not, you know, a, a great opportunity for them, often financially. Um, there was something else I was gonna say about the, uh, the state, but, but they are part of our system.
And our high school programs are, the family consumer science teacher is the daycare director, vector of an essence, and then there's, uh, another employee that's hired to, has the goods on the ground.
Um, I'll add that part of our Christine Avery partnership was that the, uh, teacher in that classroom is a Ashford City Schools employee, to try to alleviate that as a barrier, that the kindergarten teacher would, um, earn a state salary.
Do you wanna update on, on the experiment, how you know?
Sure, sure, so that is one of the, um, components of our current preschool program, we're in, in year two of partnering with Christine Avery. We're in year two of partnering with Christine Avery. There were a lot of transitions happening at the beginning of that partnership, but and we've had a teacher turnover, so one teacher moved and another teacher moved to Asheville, so we got lucky to find her. It was a difficult recruitment time for us. So we are in our second year, they are fully enrolled with 16 children in NC pre-K, and the teacher continues to fully participate in all of Asheville City Schools offerings. So she comes to our professional development, she participates with our teachers in the professional learning community, she gets direct evaluation, supports me, so any of the supports that we offer, as well as supports offered by the community to NC pre-K classrooms that are not part of the school district. So she's kind of getting double support, the Sunshine Project is supporting that classroom. And so it's going well. I mean, there are some challenges just with how the funding is structured, where we get some funding from the county and we have to receive some funding from Christine Avery through their NC pre-K. We had some funding delays, and I guess I wouldn't call them delays, they're one of the challenges of pre-K funding, is that funding just comes much later than you provide the service. And so that's really difficult for a small center to keep up with what the classroom needs, as well as, you know, paying their partners. So we reflected that, I think, in our reports. The children are doing well, and it seems to be going well on that front. The idea behind that partnership is that eventually that classroom could be self-sustaining by Christine Avery. And so I think in our next meeting, and I don't know if you want to speak to any of it at all, the aspects that I've been not part of. The idea would be that hopefully by year three, they could move to a place where they would be able to sustain the classroom. I think their biggest barrier is going to be finding a pre-K teacher, even if they can pay the salary that we pay, because that's the barrier we're finding as a community. So I think that's going to be a barrier to that classroom specifically. And another aspect that I've noticed recently is our partnership is designed so that we directly support that teacher in that classroom, and the director is supporting that teacher in that classroom, but she's also running a whole center, and we're not really involved in supporting the aspects of that whole center. So that can be a little awkward, I think.
And I think looking at with that is, we currently are looking at budget, you know, controls to make sure that when we start here with funding, as we diminish that and she becomes self-sustaining, then what does that look like and how do we make sure that it mirrors the standards and the quality that have been established, but that she's also able to pay the teacher at the current level that we've been able to support through Asheville City Schools? So it's part of the challenge of looking at her budgets and trying to make sure that we can sustain it moving forward.
I think another lesson I've learned from that partnership is just how much, it's not just about funding or access to training, but also when you're looking at building a level of quality and continuous improvement constantly, a lot of times that's a bigger culture shift than I think we realize, that it's not just as simple as saying, we'll pay and we'll provide this, so now go do this. It's much harder than it sounds.
Yeah, I would tell you.
And because of these. So I'll share a little bit of its effect this time about the Asheville City School program. So we do, our preschool program differs from Buckland County in that, other than our high school program, we do directly serve children through the school district. And so currently, we're serving 198 preschoolers across four campuses. Seven of our classrooms are housed at Asheville Primary School, which was historically the site of Asheville's preschool program. Three years ago, we started to leave some of our classrooms off-site in kind of a two-prong approach to expansion. One was adding more locations so that there was convenience for families, as well as that connection to their elementary school. And the other was adding slots, and so we have done both over time. We don't offer preschool classrooms advanced or Plaxton right now because of space issues, primarily, I don't know if there's additional issues you would want to add, but primarily there's just not space, or definitely not space that is conducive to serving preschoolers. So we do blend our funding sources, this is one of the things that I find particularly challenging, actually. But we do bring in NC pre-K funding, we partner with Head Start, we use some of our Title I funding, Asheville City Schools contributes local dollars, and we access the childcare subsidy program. A lot of school districts don't access that program because they don't offer after-school, but we do. And then we also have tuition, so families can tuition. So we leverage a lot of funding sources that makes a lot of our programming possible, but it also starts to back us into a corner sometimes with which children we can serve and when. So we often get this question of, do you have a waiting list? And we say that depends. And that's not, because that's a field, but we'd like to be able to say, if you have a child who lives in Nashville City Schools District, we would like to serve you. And so for instance, we could have an NC pre-K slot, but your child is three, not four. Or we have a slot, but if you need transportation or after-care, both of those are full. So constantly, we're saying, well, it depends if we have a slot or not. So we have children waiting, and we have open spots at times. Currently, we are full. We are providing transportation to 24 children, that is on four different bus routes. I know that doesn't sound like a lot of children, especially when we say we're serving almost 200, and a lot of that is around some of the limitations that are put on in providing transportation to preschoolers. So the length of the route, needing to have bike ride premises, needing to have ratio coverage on the bus.
Sounds like.
And then, just to add, we do have one child who requires a diabetic care manager, and so we didn't want to limit his ability to access transportation, so now our monitors also have to be diabetic care managers, so that he can ride the bus. So transportation is tricky for us and very important to our families, and it's pretty costly too, because of the gap time that we put into providing that. We do provide after-care for 63 children at the Asheville Primary Campus, still a small number compared to our 198 served, but that's half the children who attend school at Asheville Primary School. So we kind of see it as our day starts over at 2:30, and we start a whole different layer of a program to support children. We have children waiting for that, access to that program as well, but we want to maintain a high quality, so we don't want to overload our classrooms and then decrease our quality, so we kind of want to balance that out. We are directly serving 29 children, we have IEPs, Individualized Education Plans, that are exceptional children's department. So that's about 14 and a half percent, and that's a little higher, I think, than ideal, but matches the district's percentage if I'm remembering correctly. And we like, we like to do that as part of our partnerships with RCE Department, to be able to get children into high-quality early learning programs before they move into elementary school. We've talked a little bit about our Christine Avery partnership already, and then the two, the next two things I would add is just our focus on quality around the curriculum that our teachers are providing, the screenings and the assessments, and then whenever we are able to identify an evidence-based curriculum approach and then implement that with fidelity, that requires a lot of professional development and a lot of coaching. So we've been able to do some of those activities through a variety of grants, and so that's been helpful. But another funding source that we have to wrangle with in room plans. And then the last piece I'd add is our tremendous support from Asheville City Schools around family engagement. So we do, as a preschool program, have access to a social worker and a counselor, and the Family Preservation Services, mental health, the school-based counselors serve our preschoolers. Our teachers offer home visits and conferences, and then, or in parent conferences, and then we also offer really targeted training opportunities. And so right now, a lot of that is around what we used to call SEFO, the Social Emotional Foundations for Early Learning, North Carolina now calls it the North Carolina Preschool Pyramid Model. And we get direct funding from the state, a small part of money, to be, and access to trainings to be able to provide that in our center. What we're finding is across the county, more and more partners are interested in this model as well, and working to find ways to access the training. And so that's a piece I feel like, I think I might be answering one of your later questions, but I think that's a piece where we might be able to leverage our access to that funding and state training to provide more support to the community to access that model in their classrooms.
Can I speak to you, Paula?
Sorry, yes?
Yeah, thank you, that's super helpful mapping. Two questions. One is, what would it take to go from the current configuration where you have to say no to, to being able to say yes?
Right.
Aside, we understand the teacher piece.
Right, yeah.
What else would you desire?
So the, a few things, I think. One would be flexible funding for slots. So right now, having NC pre-K that's primarily for children who qualify and are four-years-old, and then Head Start funding, which is limited to three and four-year-olds who qualify for an even more stringent kind of list of requirements, a needs-based program. So really accessing funding for slots that doesn't have those restrictions.
So hypothetically, how are you funding, what's your structure that's general operating funding? It could be gap-filling funding, or there's, there's digitalities, but that potentially is one that I would think could help.
Well, Jasmine, to your point, I think one of the things that's, what Dawn said, is there's so many restrictions and rules from so many different places, that when you try to navigate them all, you invariably step on some directional challenge. So I think to your point, if the funding allowed sort of to bring all of that together, but allow them to address concerns that don't necessarily step on each of the silos in perspective of their own requirements, I think it would be helpful, especially operational, because they're so limited in how those interconnect.
And we, one of the things we have to do in order to receive the funding that we get from NC pre-K and Head Start specifically, are then overlap slots, which then also further limits folks, because if they don't qualify for both programs, then we have to move those slots around. So they're always moving targets, we don't necessarily have a specific number, we have a target number when we start this school year, but our enrollment specialist is the same, because she has to speak to every family or every single thing that they need, so she can then figure out which funding source they might qualify for, send their application to NC pre-K, send their application to Head Start, who has to approve it before we can say you can join us. Those kinds of barriers just are really prohibitive for us, even though we obviously need that funding. So big picture, like my big dream would be, can we just have funding to serve kids? Can we just have funding to serve kids, that we don't have to, Jasmine, there's always different views. But then I would add to that, so we need the flexible funding for the slots, but then also some funding around providing those wrap services, so that once we can say, yes, you can have slots, then do you also need transportation and do you also need after-care? Not that you're limited by access to those two things, just first, can you have a slot here, and second, which of these two services that we can offer you do you need? So that's another, I think, a different angle on the funding. And then that goes into hiring personnel who are qualified, because to ride the bus, you have to be able to meet the expectations to be in a classroom. I don't think, you are welcome.
Let's see, what would it take, Ben, to get some of the slots?
Yeah, what's, y'all's doing?
We would love to have, our challenges in some of our elementary schools, and with the mandate of class size changing, our spaces in our elementary schools will be taken over with elementary-age students, K1 and 2 and 3. So that worries me about those schools that have Head Starts, because we don't want to move them to a different location, we want them to be right in that building, because I think having families on the campus of an elementary school is key to transition, and it's just what's right for children, and gets them engaged in their school, homeschool community. So we would like to expand those partnerships and have more childcare in all of the elementary schools. We'd love to see more of the CTE classrooms in our other three high schools, but again, spacing is a, spacing is a challenge.
Can you go a little deeper with that some of that? Is it that, is there, is there physical space on the campus and it would just, new things would need to be built, or is that that the, there's not enough land to expand?
I think there's, the land is not the problem. It would be, is there space inside that's accessible for parents to drop off for a playground that's not in the bus area? I think every school has a unique campus, so we would look at those. And, you know, is there an option for modules, you know, that are, modules are much better now than they were at one time, and they can be customed too. We would love to see.
So we were just whispering over here about the same idea, not thinking of local companies like Delta, if we might be able to say, hey, would you help us build preschool-specific classroom? And I found counties far more, so we might benefit from that than Nashville City Schools, but that way each campus can have a preschool. I know there's other construction areas, but the idea of like this pre-fab thing that can be, but.
When you look at the success of children who have been in a pre-K classroom and they're transitioning to kindergarten, and our preschool committee that meets between Buckland County, Nashville City, with some of our local community partners, the supports that families can start receiving, especially for the social-emotional, because, you know, we know the challenges that we have inside our kindergarten classrooms, where children have not had those experiences and they may not have had the ability to be with other children and other adults outside the home. And some of the mental health challenges and the behavioral health challenges have been very challenging for us in a regular school setting, but we understand, you know, it's happening in Head Start as well, it's happening, you know, in lots of our centers. So having those services early makes such a difference. We have special education staff that traveled to 42 preschools in the area providing services now. So there's such a demand for helping students early before they even enter the traditional public schools.
I think it's the scope, the size for the county is a challenge. I mean, it's constantly running this. We have some incredible pilots throughout the curriculum. I mean, they are as strong as programs that you'll find in the entire state. Problem is, we have six districts, so how do you choose where the pilot is and what's is successful, and how do you expand it, you know, serving 23,000 students and 24 elementary schools, and I think Suzanne's correct, you know, ideally, you would have this type of program in every one of those elementary, but that's a significant, significant cost.
So you're currently at 14, and so there's 10 where there's not programs currently?
And some of our most challenging areas. Oakley, for example, Oakley does not have a pre-K or Head Start. That's a library one.
And, you know, this is certainly not my value witness, that's why, but I've been in it long enough to hear continued, the challenge of the restrictions is just, it's incredible. So I think that's got to be dealt with to stay low, and I think there's been attempts to some of the restrictions, whether it be the funding sources or whether it be the facility itself, they are just absolutely overwhelming. And I think at some point in time, this needs to be a united effort to address that. I don't think it can be addressed at the local level, though it's going to have to be addressed at the state, but it handcuffs a lot of good thoughts and attention.
Yeah, we've heard that a lot in here through every session we've done, every site visit, is the, how onerous and restrictive those guidelines are. And I think from a kind of strategy perspective, one of our hopes with this fund is, you know, is not diminishing the way that those, not diminishing the challenges that exist, but trying to create more resources locally to sort of be solutions-focused in areas where we can move the needle, and support also the kind of advocacy that ultimately will be required to turn even to the state level. We know that, you know, we'll be meeting the Nashville Public Preschool Committee in the end of this morning, and work like that, and work that y'all are doing takes energy resources too. So I think that when we talk about strategies to scale up effective systems, there's a baked into that is an understanding that some of that is the advocacy work that needs to happen to look at systems change, you know, that it's not just sort of, or at least, I would hope that our push that piece should be quite expansive, acknowledging that, that part of the work that needs to happen locally is about trying to help move the needle at the state level, and that takes resources to get people together and to know. So, you know, it may sound a little abstract, but my hope is that one of the roles this fund can play is sort of being, I'm struggling to lay an analogy, but kind of a utility player in a sense, to equip local providers with some, you know, financial resources at least, to move the needle in ways, or run plays you think can be run in this environment, and recognizing that that's not going to be just one thing. It's not just building new classrooms, it's also, you know, there's this ongoing really It's also, you know, there's this ongoing really admirable advocacy work happening around trying to change the reimbursement. If that changed, that would be a game changer locally, but it takes a tremendous amount of very wonky effort and lobbying and advocacy to do that. But I can be the only one myself in this, but I see that as sort of part of the puzzle of the local work that needs to happen. And then hopefully the county can be helping to lift up the support.
As you talk internally, are there specific initiatives that you have been thinking about that are in the pipeline? That could be ready and like for a county partnership that we open to discussing today?
Well, we've had some conversations with Burner and we were fortunate Owen High School students are in the project. And they travel to Burner for those students to have their internship. And so we would like to expand some work with them. Glenn and Marsha met with us and we've got some ideas in the beginning stage.
Six seconds?
Yeah.
And I was thinking about both Burner as well as I'm looking at John trying to get the name of the children friends. Children friends have used that model or classroom model. It does seem like there is a necessity of developers and creating specialized buildings for this use that we license share. Is that an opportunity that we could look at in terms of more classrooms in those schools? Your comment about making sure that we don't lose ground is important as well. It's all within the context, so we're trying to expand it, but sometimes there's lack of contraction within a certain year. Are there classrooms or schools that we think are threatened or at risk in the next year or two where it's going to be retaining rather than expanding?
Possibly.
So we do specifically, we do have a few schools that will reach capacity in the next couple of years because the maximum class size continues to lessen every year for the next few years. So we are looking at some of those campuses do have Head Start programs that could be threatened because we need that space for actual classrooms.
So thinking strategically and working on the fronts.
Right.
And that's why we may have to look outside of personal order.
And what schools are the?
Fairview Elementary is one that's almost at maximum capacity now.
SDs.
SDs. And I think Glenn Arden's in pretty good shape, but we already use modulars there for regular classrooms.
And big class size really became a barrier to us continuing our strategic goal of having classrooms in all of our campuses. We passed it in advance before we got there. And I don't see that changing.
Because we already, with the class size, we should just maintain it at the state. We decided to go in accordance with it. So we never did change it. So your mind flexed and those were probably not the immediate attempts.
So what's some of the ideas we have to continue our expansion until we get the potential of having a second classroom to one of our existing offsites? For a variety of reasons, parents are interested in some of offsites, even more than just one classroom of 18.
What are the offsite locations?
Paul Fletcher, Jones Elementary and Dixon. And there is not room at Jones or Dixon to add additional classrooms. And I think we want to investigate whether or not there's room at Paul Fletcher to add a second classroom. And that would give us an opportunity to have two preschool teachers in one building. It does get isolating even then they come over to work with our teachers to be in a building alone and be the only one implementing all of the regulations that you have to implement. So having a peer classroom would be a nice model for us to toy with and see what that could look like in terms of our district. That's one of the ideas we have. Every year we look at expanding after parent transportation and are able to do it just a little bit. But really being able to dig in and offer that more substantially, I think, is another idea of ours. We have also been, you've mentioned the partnership with Buckham County Schools and Community Partners around transition to kindergarten. And really looking at what we can do there. And I don't think we have concrete plans yet, but we're meeting to develop plans that really could bring us together collaboratively and with our partners.
And we're both part of a pilot with NC pre-K to work on specifically looking at transitions in three of our programs between Head Start and kindergarten. One will be Barnardsville, West Funkham, and then there's a National City site.
We have two preschool classrooms who are participating in the pilot and we think we're going to select the Ashland Primary School as the site because we think with the majority of the kids, this classroom just might end up in that school. Since we're a magnet district, it's a little harder for us to predict where the children are going to end up there.
So I think it's important for you to know that we're working within the confines of our current structures to strengthen that transition. So the more sites that we're able to, you know, serve kids, we'll be ready to strengthen the transition for those kids from K kindergarten.
What does that what does that look like in the practices?
Well, we're doing we're doing a lot of work around what does readiness look like? What does kindergarten readiness look like? I think parents have one idea about what readiness looks like. Kindergarten teachers have another and pre-K teachers have another. So to define that and to better to communicate that with parents, that's all of those people involved. The other is just a transfer of data from pre-K programs to kindergarten. So we have a rubric that's been piloted in other areas across the state. And we'll have kindergarten and pre-K teachers come together, look at that rubric, and kindergarten teachers will say, yes, this is exactly the information that we need to get our kids started on the right foot and communicate with parents.
That's been the beauty of this committee. We actually are handing our elementary principals Head Start data on individual students coming in from Head Start to a kindergarten classroom. We've not been able to do that until this year.
And system wise, if one of the things that we're trying to work on is getting more kids ready for kindergarten, my question is, how many kids are ready for kindergarten? It's always like, well, it's complicated, but how ready are our kids? And how can we tell them they're more ready, more children are ready, more children are more ready? And having some kind of community wide thinking of those system approaches. If we can have a community wide assessment standard tool for understanding what the students that can really help those assess.
Well, the state has a tool, the kindergarten entry assessment, and within the first 60 days of kindergarten, all of our kindergartners are going through that assessment. And so that would give us the data on current kindergarten and what their readiness level looks like.
And from a preschool perspective, Head Start nationally, that's a lot of great resources around transition kindergarten, what that might look like. And I think the vision for our work, correct me if I say it wrong, but I think we decided it was schools are ready for children and families and children and families are ready for schools. So it's honoring that it goes both ways.
And this is a NC pre-K pilot project beyond the government?
So that pilot project is NC pre-K. We actually kind of joined forces when the new ESSA law came to be. And we have a committee that meets pretty regularly with the Buckham Partnership for Children, NC pre-K, Head Start, Ashland City Schools, Buckham County Schools, and our EC Special Services Program.
What's that community?
The ESSA pre-K Committee. Does that sound right?
So that that collaboration is exists.
It's been in place for a year.
Intermediates across the whole, across any county.
And there's some state level support coming in for it. We just attended a regional meeting together for the second time. And some resources going into providing support for us to develop a problem of practice, which we chose transition to kindergarten. And we kind of layered in this NC pre-K pilot that we knew was happening.
Can you describe some services that there is for that? Your care of transportation and how would you describe and what can be done in those other sort of supplemental? You mentioned earlier doing like a counselor and other supportive, not teaching staff.
Right.
What is needed in that area?
If I recall correctly, we had a just a district budget planning session yesterday and social workers and counselors were identified as a need across the district. I know in other districts across the state, there's a dedicated school social worker. Right now, we've been very lucky to partner with Ashland Primary School being on our campus because that bringing in elementary students has brought in some of the typical elementary resources for our preschoolers that historically, when we were a standalone campus, we didn't have access to, or at least not fully. So we have a social worker dedicated to our campus who serves our children just as equally as she serves the primary children. We have a counselor dedicated to our campus the same way and the mental health therapist as well. So it's been nice for us to kind of get our feet into that system. So the next level for me would be thinking about dedicating staff to preschoolers who can really embrace kind of the needs of a family with a preschooler that are different than an elementary school. For instance, transportation, if you're in elementary school, you're entitled to transportation. If you're in preschool, you're not. And so just those barriers that are still in place at preschool that start to get removed in elementary school. As well as all the other barriers to do this for kids across the district.
And one other need that we explore, while our students need that emotional support, they also need that instructional support. I met with our mental health liaison, Cabala, and so our next step is to hire emotional instructional support folks to assist our students as well. So while we're trying to balance that emotional side, we want to make sure that we have that balance for that instructional side to provide that support as well. So that was a budget need. We were calling them behavior assistants. So we looked up the term for the correct identification for that support person. And according to the state, is the emotional instructional support person. So we identified that through our budget priority needs yesterday.
Specific to the preschool or elementary?
It would be specific to preschool, elementary, all schools really, but if we're talking our early childhood in preschool today, yes. And so our goal and our vision would be to have a person of that nature in each one of our schools for all of our students. Because we found that to be extremely important.
I think if you brought principals from both systems in, fill this room and ask them to come with one one unified message, it is that that particular area that Denise has talked about is the priority across the board.
That range is very high and our priority needs, yesterday, it was one of the top three.
So I think that speaks to the need for a better quality mental and behavioral health services just in Buckham County itself. Because while families have some access to it, they need to be able to relate and be okay with accessing that service. And a lot of times they're not. So I guess the means of more meetings with buyer, try to work with them and change some of those service definitions. Because if you're unable to relate to them, then you're not really helping, can be a barrier.
And also with our family needs, I think we placed this on our list. We want to be very specific, strategic in what do our families need. So we want to make sure that we offer some type of parent learning sessions. And we really want to talk about that recruitment part. As mentioned, there's a transition from pre-K to kindergarten and the recruitment looks very different. And in some aspects, it looks alike, but we want to prepare our parents and our community for that as well. So we want to look at that instructional component there. And then again, providing those services and letting the families know where you can get those services, how to access those services and to call on them at any time, not just when things are going bad, but at all times, keeping that constant motion of things going. So we want to kind of look at three opportunities for our families throughout the year and just let those be three things that permeate and they have access to all along.
And a layer to that that I'll add that we talked, I talked a little bit earlier about our NC preschool pyramid model work. And then we, as part of that sort of framework for best practices in social emotional learning for all young children, that same that same model applies for older kids as well. And then there's we are accessing conscious discipline training, which is an additive based model for just again, best practices and supporting children. And sending staff, we're hoping to send by staff members this summer to a training through a grant that our student services department has. So also partnering within our district, but I think adding that to the community layer too. If we want to support the rest of the community and implementing these practices, then I also have been working with the data on for the, I can't remember the new name you just said.
Emotional instructional support.
Emotional instruction.
Instructional support.
Having them access these trainings and implement these practices too. And I think as we ramp that up and ramp up our implementation of this project, support in making sure we're doing that consistently for our kids across our district. And part of the transition, you know, our attention to transition is what we're doing in preschool is very, very different than what's happening in kindergarten or first or second or third, then what impact is it really happening? And so how can we make that consistent across everybody?
I think this is really, we can find a message and it's our hope. I think we both would lock arms and say this is our hope regarding the pre-K, preschool, the childcare. Because what we're finding in reality is when you go into our kindergartens or go into our kindergarten classrooms, you're seeing this aspect of the emotional, the emotional intelligence, the emotional instruction. It has so many different names, but it's not the academic focus. The academic focus, we can, we can catch kids up on. But what we're finding is it's almost becoming too late for certain children as they go into kindergarten without any experience whatsoever to attain the social emotional intelligence piece. I think this is the unified message. This is the hope of, this is why we're excited about being here. Because we're just finding out that unless we have this piece now, we're just seeing such challenges come into the kindergarten.
Quick time check. We have about 20 minutes until the top of the hour. Before we end today, we're going to open for any public comments. I want to leave a little time for that. What questions do you have for commissioners or guidance or input or feedback? Those of you who have been quiet, if you have any things that you'd like to lay in.
I just wanted, we were whispering over here to them, but we want to whisper. One of the things that we're very well aware of, we're asking how many kids are really ready for pre-K? How many kids are really ready for kindergarten? I think that that is only determined by the number of spaces that we have now. So if there was a way, Dawn was just saying, if there was a way to actually build new facilities so that we could allow that kind of service to be provided, not just for the city, but for the county. But if we can find a way to do that, I feel the need, as Dr. Valman has said, is huge. And by the time the kids get to kindergarten, if they haven't had access to the kinds of programs that are being provided for the pre-K kids, it's almost too late. So money's important. If we could find a way to actually facilitate the need that we have in our community, that would be the plan.
I have a couple of quick questions about workforce development. And anticipating is going to come up in our next session as well. It comes up so often, it's such a big issue. As you could get sort of some models in other parts of the country where states or cities have been able to move the needle on things or have sort of announced commitments to universal pre-K. Some of the kinds of tools they've been using include recruitment incentives, recruitment bonuses, tuition support, retention incentives. A lot of things you see in the corporate sector that, and I just wonder if those are the kind of tools y'all are already using or if funding was available to contemplate implementing. Because one is, and the other is, it has seemed as an outsider, that, meaning I don't work in the field, that I've wondered if there's, if there, if there could be opportunities for additional collaboration around the recruitment side of the house. So instead of having eight different people competing for the same three teachers and a differential of a thousand and maybe a little bit better benefits than someone here, if some kind of shared recruitment strategies might, might help change that narrative of it or change something that's happening. I'm not trying in any way to diminish the challenges that are there, but, you know, you see D.C., the New York City thing, we're doing universal pre-K. They've got to be finding teachers. I mean, how are you finding teachers that are putting more money on the table?
Right.
So yeah, I don't want to simplify or oversimplify, but talk to us about that side of the house.
I think that we need to, again, we've got to find a way to market this job opportunity for starting with seven and eight breakers and get them interested in this kind of work. So this work has to have
So this work has to have a better paying salary. And the internship is the beauty about, for a high school student. They get to go in and get high school credit, they're learning. AB Tech is a great partner that provides some of those courses for our students after they do early childhood one and two with us. So again, that pipeline to AB Tech, with scholarships, even though the high school students can attend those classes for free, we still have to get high school students excited about the work and the possibilities, and we've got to do that earlier.
I think another layer that North Carolina faces, and I think we've talked about before, is the limitations of a birth of kindergarten degree. And many other states offer a birth through third grade degree. So honoring the fact that the early childhood is really birth through age eight, not five. And so in North Carolina, I think people are really pressed to get a degree that lends them to either working in a preschool setting or kindergarten. Often, I don't know that this continues to be the case, but often principals don't necessarily want to hire a birth to kindergarten teacher because they won't be able to move them around the building. And you guys can speak to that better than me.
That's very true.
So the field, like with a birth of kindergarten degree, it's just not that attractive, you know?
Right.
So that's a more state level conversation too. And I know that there's an inter, or I can't remember what it's called, but the council at the state level is talking about that. I don't think it's moving very quickly. So some of, maybe some of the advocacy work around that, or, not that I want to change the requirements around who should be an NC pre-K teacher, but could there be some adjustments on those requirements, or if you're an elementary teacher who is in school to entering a birth of kindergarten. And my plug for the birth through third grade degree is also then we can infuse some more developmental appropriate practices into what we're teaching teachers of kids up to age eight. And so I think that that would help this transition to kindergarten conversation too. I do think we are competing with each other locally, unfortunately, and so teachers are jumping from program to program, chasing the benefits and chasing the salary, or chasing the, the school district schedule, you know, Head Start offers that, and so we do have competing factors that end up hurting other community centers. And that is something I wanted to say earlier, is as we talk about strengthening our programs, I think we have to be mindful of when then we get in the other programs, and what that might look like when we take away opportunities from other programs to be better. And so I said it before, and I continue to say that we, I would love to leverage what we have to offer to support other programs and their efforts too, like we have done with Christine Agri and whatnot. So if there's a way to look at that as well, could we expand our access to the NC pyramid model so that we can offer it to more centers as well? More coaches from Asheville City Schools who can go out and support community and childcare centers, and so we can have that support there.
Jasmine, one other thing at the state level, especially during public comment at our last meeting, was the conversation around how to work with folks as they move toward their degrees.
Yeah.
Instead of forcing them to be degree, how do, how do we work with the quality piece, as well as give people the opportunity to work while they're getting that full four-year degree? So there have been discussions, I can't tell you that we're to a resolution, but we are certainly looking at ways to try to address the workforce piece, but at the same time, keep the quality at the focus, but how do we move the needle as well?
Right.
In getting people to be willing to step into that particular opportunity.
One thing, I'm starting to see, you know, you just said, and something you also said about the high school based programs, is as we think sort of on a systems level, it's exciting to think about kind of the unique pieces of the puzzle that different partners bring into the system. You know, y'all are, you know, the high school exposure and workforce development, recruitment opportunities that exist in those two programs and the initial programs, that could serve the entire early childhood system locally, where the pyramid model and training services that serve the whole system. So I sort of want to put that out there as an orientation, as y'all and us thinking, or at least as I think about this, it lasts about saying, every silo needs to possess all of these characteristics, and they compete with each other. It's more, are there different partners in the broad system that can bring these, with the funding support, the support can bring these resources that they have and make them accessible to other players in the system? To me, it feels like an exciting sort, when we think about how do we support and fund efficiencies? Because scaling this up is not, is not just continuing to replicate what currently exists, which is lots and lots and lots and lots of providers, many of them repeating the same, you know, things. It's trying to figure out, how do we, how do we get a rocket to Mars? Not how do we go from here to California? And that's the space that I think is exciting and creative, and you know, we're looking to hear kind of breakthrough ideas, the dreams that y'all have, recognizing that, you know, $3.6 million a year is not going, is maybe a tenth of what would be required for all of these dreams, we realize, but it's a different kind of funding stream, and I think a more flexible one, and a permanent one, that can hopefully be an accelerant in the local systems. So that's just sort of something I want to, as we move into the next stage of folks actually starting to mark classification, we can do this together, hope that, it's exciting about the collaborations already happening between the two school systems, and the way y'all are working together, and that seems like just such a natural strength and asset to keep going.
I think one thing we need to keep in mind in regards to the workforce development piece, and kind of retaining and recruiting appropriate staff members, is diversification of those staff members. We have to, we have to identify ways to bring diversified folk to Asheville, to enforce the instruction, and what we're trying to do throughout our city to reach all of our students. And the only way to do that is to be able with our diversification. So I think we just need to cognizant of the diversification piece, and how we recruit, retain folk, and what we need to maintain. For what you might be able to get up here, but what are you going to do to be able to keep here? And that's the key column in workforce development piece is keep it up here. So.
Thank you for adding that.
I'll add one more thing that I think it has, it may be unpopular, but I think I'd be remiss in not, in not making sure everyone's aware, that public school districts can operate preschool classrooms that are unlicensed, with one of the few organizations that can do that. There's a waiver that DPI sponsored classrooms can apply for and operate unlicensed. And so what that does is free us up from some of the bureaucracy that we get stuck in, and it can also offer the opportunity to diminish quality. But I know larger districts like we, for example, they operate a variety of classrooms, some of which are unlicensed, some of which are NC pre-K, some of which access another funding source in the state that we also access, and I didn't mention, was developmental day funding, but specific to exceptional children. So they operate different classrooms depending on what funding sources they're going to use in those classrooms, or for specific slots. And so we don't, in the preschool, the 11 classroom, 10 classrooms that I oversee, they're all licensed because we access those state and federal funding sources, subsidy, NC pre-K, and Head Start. But we do offer three classrooms of unlicensed preschool slots in our Montessori classrooms, but we don't access any funding sources for those slots, so their tuition or district scholarship. It's only our second year of doing that, and since we oversee it, the quality's not diminished. But I do think it's an opportunity to think about what could Buncombe County and Asheville City do if we were able to run classrooms that did not have to access those funding sources in a quality way?
Would that address some of the challenges on pre-K? Like a teacher wouldn't have to have a pre-K degree, or could be working towards a pre-K degree.
Right. I mean, it would, it could address every challenge we just talked about, almost, but with the right kind of funding. The staffing, the ratios don't have to be maintained, I mean, some things that we consider best practices, so I'm not saying.
Yeah, this is brainstorming.
Right, yeah. So, so I think there's just an opportunity, since we both have that ability, you know, I think in Buncombe County, all of your classrooms are Head Start, so they have to follow the legacy patterns. But if Buncombe County wanted to open their own classroom in one of these schools, they have this opportunity. And I don't, I know a little about it, since we did open these three licensed classrooms. So I just think it's an opportunity that we have to put out there, that as school districts, that's a, that's something we can leverage possibly, to make funding go further.
Just on the perimeter of last seat board meeting, and they just were discussing that, but I think the key is exactly what you said, because that unlicensed can in essence limit the access to some of those families and children that absolutely need it, but that's where certainly that could be balanced out with your funding from the county.
Right. And that's what we do in our unlicensed classrooms, to make sure that it didn't limit who could access. So half the slots are tuition slots, and half are scholarships. And scholarships are determined on whether or not you would qualify for NC pre-K. Because their restrictions are, it's a little bit more, it's easier to qualify for NC pre-K than it is for Head Start. So we said, if you qualify for NC pre-K, we will scholarship you to a slot, even if you're free. We took away the age requirement.
Really?
Yes. Now, that's a limited number of slots, we're talking about 18 slots, or 24 slots, sorry. But it's kind of an experiment, and what is it like to run an unlicensed program? And financially, we wouldn't be able to maintain it without the rest of the preschool program, and the support that the primary school has to bring in, but.
Particularly the structures in place and staffing and having, somebody has got to be in charge, and it takes that staffing that an elementary, old elementary principal's not qualified to do.
Right. Yeah, so maybe it's not an idea for next year, but I think it's something for us to put out there.
Yeah, that's really interesting. So we're about 5 minutes before, and it looks like we've got guests coming in for our next session, so I'm gonna call this meeting to a close, but before we do, one of the characteristics that we'll find from the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners in the subcommittee meetings made up of commissioners is public comment. And so we don't have a formal structure for this committee, because it's still recruiting its members, chair and vice chair, and all those sort of things are in place, but is there anyone, I'm thinking of our friend Jerry who's over here, but is there anyone who has attended this meeting as a member of the public who wants to make a comment before we close the 8:30 to 10 o'clock? Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Y'all know me from special education advocate, I've talked to Dr. Ball and his upper staff, and for 32 years I've done this. So they can't tell you that I don't know what I'm talking about. If they do, don't listen, because I'll challenge any of them, because the court of law is the court of law. If you don't have a law, you ain't got nothing. Now, we've got special education law on the book. They know it, I know it. I deal with their attorneys, they deal with me, and they'll call them in on me, let me tell you, they'll call them in on me. But that's okay, I can handle them lawyers as well. This is the problem here. Tony addressed it just a little bit. Special education is specific. It's a law, it's a procedural, it is a federal law. We're not getting funded for it properly. We are getting capped at the state level at 12.5, or 12.75. The county is picking up just a little bit to make it up into 13 point something. Well, what's happening? These kids that we're talking about that you want in the school system? Wait a minute, let's fix what we got in the school system before we start putting more in the system. Because the very ideals of things that you're bringing up about pre-K exist in the school right now, from starting in the school, right on up. We've got teachers that are young, that has no qualifications for special education in the regular school environment, and that is the majority of the teachers. They do not have the skills they need, they don't have the training they need, and we're talking specific here. So if you're going to put these pre-Ks into the regular school, just remember, the teachers on up the line don't have it either. So we better fix what we got up here, because if you put more in, you're just complicating the problem more. And I have found that most regular teachers do not want kids with ADHD, which is, we'll say, the common problem, or other health impaired, they do not want them in their classroom. They are supplementing social workers and counselors for jobs and duties that they are not really responsible to do in the way they do it. Special education is very specific, and you need that kind of instruction, and they're not getting it. They haven't been getting it. So if you don't fix what's already there, you've got bigger problems if you put more into the system. And funding is a big piece here. They need funding for supplement help in the classroom. You've got a regular teacher, and what do they do? They grab a social worker or a counselor to come in and do a class in the classroom for a curriculum. Now, that's not the way special education works. If you're not identified, then you're not into the system to get what you're really supposed to get. If you don't have, if you don't have a cap, then that way, you could put the kids in and get what, some of what you need. But the way it is, you won't. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Glad to for your time, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
For visiting with us, and we look forward to continuing the conversation.
Thank you all so, so much, and put in a plaudit for, if you know, if you're interested in serving this committee, we're really excited to put together a strong, huge passion for this issue. Thank you all so, so much. We're glad that your conversation continued.
Hi. You don't have to move your camera.
Good morning, everyone, thank you for being here. I'm going to settle these guys down in the front row there. Good morning, this is a meeting of the Early Childhood Education and Development Committee of Buncombe County, which is newly forming in association with the establishment of the Fund about the same name, Early Childhood Education Fund. As this new committee gets together and puts its structure in place, one of the main areas of focus is to engage with partners and with the public to gather input for the formation of this fund, and with the funding and the policy recommendations of the committee. So this is important stuff in our early process. Commissioners, as I helped them put together the early structures for the committee, wanted us to, ran out of the gate, get in the room with the city and county schools, which happened immediately prior to this meeting this morning, so I'm going to be here early and listen in on that, thank you, and participate in. And then also to get with the sort of the local providers network and those groups and organizations that have participated in the actual Buncombe preschool planning collaboration, which has been an important advisor in place of providing information to both the county and to our elected board over the past couple of years, as we've really dug in on this topic, and studied it, and looked at ways that Buncombe County can help assist. So before I tell you about the agenda, a couple items of housekeeping. There are sign-in sheets out there, I've got another one right here that I'll send around. Please make sure that you sign the sign-in sheet, so that we can capture your name in our minutes, and that we can follow up with you. We have restrooms, if you find that the restrooms are locked, we try to keep them open, but there are keys hanging on a peg just inside the conference room door, if you need a restroom key. I've got parking validation up here on this corner of the table, if you park through the parking deck.
You should do.
Is that the stand for our housekeeping? We've got until 11:30, which is a hard stop, because this is a board of commissioners meeting day, and some of the members of this three, I forget what the order is, the commissioners do their pre-meetings to get with manager today to get a briefing on what the agenda for this conference will look like. So it's a full day of meetings. The format for our meeting will be, we'll do a round of introductions, I'll introduce myself, and give everyone else a chance to introduce. A quick welcome and greeting from the members of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners that are on this committee. I will go through some informational slides, which are reflective of the information in these handouts, and then the rest of the time together will be for discussion. We know that a lot of you have been thinking about or have studied on this topic, and have information and questions that you bring in. It's an opportunity to weigh and provide feedback, input about the process and the structures that have been put in place so far by commissioners, and an important function of being together is that we can talk about future opportunities. What are those dreams, goals, visions, activities that we can look together on? What are those dreams, goals, visions, activities that we can look together on in the coming months and years as the commissioners work on this new fund? So my name is Rachel Nygard, for those of you who don't know me, and my role is Strategic Partnership Director for the county, which means that I support various kinds of community collaborations and community initiatives and investment programs focused on the county's top strategic priorities, of which early childhood education is one. Rachel Nygard.
Rashida Maydans, the supervising community engagement for the county.
Chuck Roseblum, National Buncombe Preschool Collaborative.
Carter Smith, Public Services.
John Metzger, Preschool Director of National Preschool.
Glenda Wyder, Mark Allen, Child Care Commission.
Marsha Whitney, Early Learning.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Very honored, Program Operations Advisor for Community Action Opportunities.
Greg Gorman, Children's Business Schools, Buncombe County.
Corey Price, of all early learning, Director of a Buddy Center here in Nashville.
Ellen Johnson, Early Preschool, Teacher, Girl, Child Education.
Sorry, I'm checking.
This is our family community engagement and also for our decades.
Amy Mary, Buncombe Partnership for Children, also, you should see this, a lot of others are here for the actual Buncombe preschool.
Carolyn Ruddy, Buncombe Partnership for Children and ADP.
Stacy Bailey, with Buncombe Partnership for Children, the pre-K program.
Jennifer Bosworth, Chairperson of Early Childhood Education at AD Tech, and also a member of the actual Buncombe Preschool Collaborative.
Good morning, I'm Trish Walling with Health and Human Services for Buncombe County and the Economic Service Department.
Good one, and private, we pass community action opportunities, head start.
Leslie Anderson, Leslie Anderson Consulting, and do a fair amount of work with my clients in early childhood, but also been involved in the collaborative and other local efforts.
Beth Maske, CEO of the YWCA, and a part of the preschool community.
Salam and I am there, Chief Program Officer with the YWCA.
Denise Persano, I'm the Early Learning Program Director for the YWCA.
Oh, hi, I'm Ron, the academic success, I work with Jennifer at AD Tech.
My boss.
Jerry Rice, I'm Africa for special needs kids, and I don't work for no agencies, and I'm a wild man, you know, but I get it done. So I know I'm unique in this crowd, I'm not paid by nobody, so you can really do a good job, you know? Thank you.
Al Wade, Commissioner, District One.
Robert Thressley, District Three Commissioner.
Jasmine Beach, District Four Commissioner.
Can I invite commissioners, if there's any words of introduction or setting the stage that we'd like to offer before we go?
Yeah, sure. I just want to say a very warm welcome and lots of appreciation to y'all for sharing your time this morning. We just wrapped up a really exciting conversation with the school systems, and are looking forward to this one. As a, one placed among many, well, there'll be opportunity for, to hear input, to hear expertise. We want to keep all channels open as we're moving forward with launching this work and taking the county's commitment around early childhood education really into its next chapter. And what I'm most excited about today is just hearing from y'all, doing lots of listening about what you envision as possible in the years to come in Buncombe County as we serve our youngest kids. And we know y'all are operating in a landscape that has a lot of restrictions and regulations and very tight funding and tight margins. We appreciate the realities of that, and our, our hope is that this new and additional funding stream is a funding stream that can help you navigate those in different ways and help us collectively think about ways to scale up access to high-quality care. It's gonna take a lot of creativity, a lot of innovation, and I think we're all thinking about this, this first year of the fund is one where we're learning a lot about how to do this, but also feel a lot of excitement about launching this, moving from the talk phase into the doing phase, understanding that, you know, we'll be learning a lot as we go and understanding that the wisdom and expertise of folks on the ground every day needs to be one of the many guide stars as we move through the work. So thank you all for being here, and just really excited about this conversation and doing lots of listening.
Well, thank you, we had a good meeting before this, and just echo everything Jasmine has said. We're here to listen, and I want to learn, we're around two experts here, so, you know, we have got to learn, and we have got to make sure we strive and not be stale, we need to make progress from here on.
Good morning and welcome, and I'm sorry I missed the earlier meeting, I was thinking it was ten o'clock, for those of you who work with me, you know I'm not an early morning person. But I would like to say that this is great, because it's long overdue. One, I served eight years on the city school board, so I know the need, and hopefully we can give you folks the support you need to really be more successful at what you do. And to me, it's a personal experience, too. Seven years ago, my younger grandson, who's in the seventh grade at Ashford Middle School now, I remember he was born in April, and my wife retired from school teaching after thirty-four years in May. So it's no doubt in my mind who was gonna keep him until he, you know, would go to kindergarten, and surely did. The first day of kindergarten, it was my pleasure to pick him up and bring him home, and because they lived next door to us. But what really got me early on was how frustrated Adrian was. He told me, he said, "Grandpa, there's kids who can't spell cat, they don't know their colors, they don't know the answer to their name, they can't write their names." And that's when I realized what really we need to do in this community to change things. And it's unfortunate what teachers have to go through, because when you see kids from different extremes when they start out, boom, that's where the gap starts, and it just gets wild. And that's why pre-K is important. We've got to start here and make the changes, and make sure that we use our tax dollars to get the most out of it and be more efficient in what we do. So that's why I'm here, it's personal, not only as a commission, and I'm concerned about our community and what we need to do for our kids.
Thank you. So the structure of this session, again, the purpose is to share plans, gather feedback, discuss collaborative opportunities. I'll walk through a few slides to provide an overview of information related to the community and the fund, then let's open up for an open format conversation for input and feedback about the information that's been shared and discussion about those opportunities. So as a reminder, the framing, this is language from the strategic priority, the Board of Commissioners for the county established the six current strategic priorities over a year ago now, in December of twenty seventeen. We revisited this in December of twenty eighteen with the establishment of the Early Childhood Education and Development Fund. In that resolution, if you pull that up from that evening on the Board of Commissioners website, you'll see that it would also, that resolution established a Early Childhood Education Committee to go along with it, in articulated language for the purpose of that committee to be, to engage with community partners, solicit public input, and then policy and funding recommendations. And so what stands out to me as I look at that is that it's very heavy on the discussion and engagement with communities. As we've got together, I've been providing staff support to this group of commissioners, when the resolution went in that evening, it actually said a subcommittee of commissioners, but that, from the bench that evening, the Board of Commissioners said, "We need to come up with a way to have participation from members of the community on our committee." And so that was one of the first things that I gathered information about how this could potentially be structured and put this together, and in your packet there is an announcement about the opening, which lists this, if it's tricky to read on the screen for you. The idea being that we have the three members who are currently appointed, and then six official members from the public who have joined in to the committee and be a part of studying issues, engaging with the public, and helping form those recommendations around policy and funding to go to the Board of Commissioners ultimately. To include, a member of the business community and for economic development, funder or community investment professional, someone who is a parent, someone who's from the medical community, someone who's from the higher education community, and someone who is in retirement in the field of early childhood education. There we are. I was looking at the crystal. Almost there, we are. So the fund, remember, we're a community and a fund, the purpose of the fund is really to advance the county's strategic priority to be another, another line of support, another line of investment, and Buncombe County does work all across the community, across actual county and region in the state, but specifically here, trying to take our work in early childhood to next level. These strategic goals are the same that were listed in that resolution from December of twenty eighteen with a slight tweak, and again, this is listed on your handout, the whole of you. The slight tweak is that the language here is in the description, pre-K. The way it was written left questions in our mind about intent. Did we mean to box this in as this is a pre-K early fund? And those of you who are there at the table at preschool planning collaborative, we've had a lot of these conversations with pre-K and preschool, what is the specific ages that we need in this setting? And so this is open to the early childhood care education with an emphasis on pre-K, and so it's not exclusive. So to the strategic goals, to collaborate, to work on availability as well as affordability, to work on any of those issues around availability, affordability, quality services and support that meet the needs of families and children, also means working on those workforce issues. We've spent a lot of time digging in and looking at what are the challenges and the barriers and things that get in the way of our vision, and we know that working on system level enhancements, including workforce, is going to be critical. And finally, always present, making sure that the strategy, the programs, the systems, interventions that are implemented are sensitive to the needs of the families and the children that we serve, because if you look at the other strategic priorities of the county or any of the organizations that we represent, these are interlinked issues, issues of housing affordability, issues of substance use and addiction, these are issues that impact the families and the children that are the interface of the early childhood care education system. And so as again, from the resolution of priorities for funding from the early childhood fund, are new classrooms, workforce strategies, scaling up, and supporting those families and children in those programs. For me, some eligibility, in, one thing that you'll notice is that we want to be open, and so when we look at organization type, this is different than some of our other grant or funding streams, not just nonprofits, not just public organizations, or organizations of any type for providing services within this range at the system or program level to move the needle are eligible to make applications to the county. And this is the first year, this is a learning year. One of the things, and I'll let you know, we'll follow up with a note on this, but one of the things that we're gonna do in year one is limit capital requests to the public organizations, and that's related to guidance and research that we've been doing, the legal, sort of the statutory authority for local investments. Do you want to think back on that, like a good last, kind of a good job?
Yeah, just a quick footnote on this, and I'm happy to kind of talk at greater length if anyone is interested. We've been in a lot of dialogue with folks from the school of government, from Alonzi in particular, and also the county legal department, and then looking at the cohort of other counties that are sort of on the, with Buncombe on the leading edge of devoting new funding and significant funding to expansion, and are in an interesting, interesting area where the general statutes do not, in a, in a particularly nuanced way, address the realities of local funding for early childhood education. So the great news is that there's clear guidance that counties can provide program and operational funding to community-based, nonprofit, private centers, ed schools, but they're consistently, or sort of a reading of statutes as are currently written, that the capital would be confined to the school system funding. That could change, and I think there's advocacy opportunities in that, and I also think it's just interesting to know, you know, there's not settled case law on this, there's not precedents to refer to, so there's kind of, Buncombe is in that cogwheel of counties that are trying to figure out together, how do we utilize local dollars to be most impactful, and then also consistent with general statute. So again, I got very in the weeds on this, happy to talk further with folks, I'm not a lawyer, but I think Rachel's framing that this is a year-one guideline that is important to keep in mind, and my, my art of hope is that the state will be moving the needle on that, and I think how important it is to create pathways and open doors to more funding and less restricted funding. Just a quick note on that.
Anyways, our leadership transition gets guidance from our economic and our interpretation. My experience in helping for guide process and all of this is that the area of legal is an area where there's a lot of different room for interpretation, so we've gathered a lot of information, and maybe we'll have more time to figure out exactly what that's going to be. So when we say year one at Buncombe, that's our county's fiscal year, twenty, which starts July one, twenty nineteen, through June thirty, twenty twenty. Another note on here is that we do want to see multi-year requests coming in. The county is establishing this as an entirely new fund, which means it's not in the annual general fund, it will be, how do I describe this? The, when the commissioners adopt a budget, it's the resolution, or the intent to include three point six million dollars within that annual budget, then goes into this monthly fund. Investing in system change and scaling up means staying where it is, and that kind of meaning, there's trouble with certain things, and so we would encourage you, welcome people to think outside the confines of the traditional fiscal year. tentative timeframe for this, here we are in February, having community engagement sessions. The application for meeting members is open until March fifteenth, and the funding application we anticipate to see is opening up within a couple of weeks, to be due in April as that committee forms and works on all of its logistics. What will the meeting schedule look like? How will, how often will we meet? What will our first priorities be? And then looking at what kinds of investments will we be, and are potentially able to be made coming up as we head into our first fiscal year of having. That's an overview of the information, so we're back to what the agenda looks like, which is plans of input and feedback about plans, and discussion of the vision, the ideas that you have, and goals and activities and opportunities.
Yes, it is, okay. It's a great table. Yeah. Y'all are steering the ship in this conversation, and we have questions, we'll pepper things with, but floors y'all's.
Great. So I want to start by saying that I, I really believe that there are shared core values between the folks on actual Buncombe Preschool Planning Collaborative and other folks in the job community for this work, along with the mission of really taking a systems approach, cross-sector collaboration, and a true sense of transparency, and I want to be sure that those are really reflected in this greatly important work. So I come to today's meeting just reminding myself to assume the vast intentions, and at the same time, I'm, I'm reminding everyone that we must carefully consider our actions to avoid any unintended negative consequences, and the importance of being transparent. So I'm gonna get to some ideas and recommendations, but I just want to say that I was surprised to learn last week that the committee has reformed and posted the application process, and while I really appreciate thinking about this and wanting to plan and move forward, I guess the surprise for me was seeing materials that were shared, they did not have to develop. So my interpretation of that, and I truly hope it's a misinterpretation, was feeling that decisions have been made, here's a plan that's laid out, that includes really an aggressive timeline for funding. So I want to be sure that there's really, you know, a time for recommendations and feedback, and then there's an openness to really... feedback, and then there's an openness to really consider both the membership of this committee and the structure, and what's the work that needs to happen for us to really be successful in taking advantage of this incredible opportunity. So I suspect that you all feel some real pressure to move forward and get some funding out of the committee, and I agree that that needs to happen. But I caution you to consider really two waves of funding. So what's ready to roll, and some, as you've identified, these are capital needs to expand, that would be great. And I'm not talking about investing in a year-long strategic planning process, and you know, ABPCC and other folks that have done a lot of planning work. But I do think that given that this is systems-level work, that we really need to address the systems issues, and that requires intentional planning, really to create a long-term vision, starting with, hey, what do we hope to achieve in three years? What do we want this to look like in three years? And then working back from there about what are the objectives? What are the outcomes? How are we addressing the systems issues? So that we're then able to look at what are the priorities for funding that can really result in sustainable change and expanded opportunities. So I appreciate the three of you stepping up to share your leadership in this work. And I want to recognize my appreciation for Rachel. She has a huge job, and as the staff member supporting the ECP committee, and as a previous member of the Ashville Buncombe Preschool Planning Collaborative, I know she has a strong grasp on this work and is deeply committed. And I just want to share, I think most folks here are actually on the Ashville Buncombe Preschool Planning Collaborative, so they've probably received these documents, and these are documents that folks in work groups and leadership of the Planning Collaborative receive. So I took the opportunity to share those with people previously, we shouted fast what we need. And one of the things that concerns me is that you put a structure out there that recognizes the importance of input from other sectors of the community, and I absolutely support that. And you'll see that reflected in documents here. But in expansion, to really take advantage of content knowledge, the depth and breadth of folks who are doing this work, who really understand the local landscape and the statewide landscape, that's really important as we consider leveraging other resources for this work, and who are currently deeply engaged in the work. And we've learned from other communities that are doing this work. Durham, for example, and East Elsal, and the structure they've taken on and the progress they've made to really move forward. So there's a set of recommendations here regarding committee structure, identifying what are the theater systems that we need to work at, if there are anything else changed, a long list of potential committee members that is not meant to prioritize anybody, but to say, here's some names and categories of those for consideration. So I think it's really important for us to consider that ABPCC identified some real barriers to expanding, and I think there was recognition of that in the way that the resolution was framed. What I'm truly hopeful for is that the work of the to-be-named committee and the focus of the fund can actually address those barriers and work upstream so that we create a strong foundation. So I'm here, I shouldn't speak for anyone else, I'm here to support you in the work and want it to be born. I encourage you to take advantage of the resources that we have in this community and to recognize that you all are three folks, six other folks in the community maybe are not grounded in early childhood. Rachel was one person who's gotten from lots of other projects, so that we can really help inform the work while also being upfront and transparent and recognizing conflicts of interest. Many of us have conflicts, and we think there's a way to do that and excuse ourselves from any work to make decisions around funding. You know, we recognize that that would be inappropriate. So I also want to be lastly clear and upfront that Buncombe Partnership has engaged in work on workforce development, and we launched a pilot this fall, recognizing a key area to expansion is the lack of qualified workforce. So we knew that it would require engaging partners in the community who have commitment to the work and bring skills and experience. So we are appreciative of the opportunities, the ETEC and STEP program. We knew that we had to reach providers, early care and education providers in the community to do this. We stretched ourselves at the partnership, we took a calculated risk, we've used some investments previously from the county, our childcare resource, and referral work. And the whole idea was, let's build on investments that have already been made and capitalize on that. I know that can't be the only approach, we've got a lot of work to do in workforce development. That's a start, and there's some work that we invested in as well at Murgers Center for Learning, Warren Wilson, and collaboration with Owen. But we need to see if there are other models and strategies that we can develop, because that is such a core issue to expansion. I'm sad a lot, I'm clearly passionate about this, I'm ready, I'm willing, I want to do whatever I can to support this work. So thank you.
I'm also on the ABPCC, but I'm just retiring. I have no stake in education, kind of no stake in grandchildren, and appreciate all of the things you mentioned about the personal passion now. The work at this committee, and I've only been on the collaborative for two years, but the meetings, retreats, the subcommittees, the research, the findings that have been shared among the committee has really, as Amy said, a lot of breadth and a lot of depth. And you might consider a lot of it as expert testimony, if you reviewed some of our notes and some of our meeting decisions. And being an outsider, looking at the experts, it's real impressive to see this committee has done its homework. And we really hope that it gets used, that the sharing is both ways, so that there's not duplication of effort and one that would delay the action that we're all so interested in having.
And I'll speak a little bit to the workforce side of things. As the chairperson of early childhood, ABTEC is pretty much in Buncombe County, the one who provides higher education. We've got surrounding community colleges and surrounding colleges and universities that provide education, but not, Western is our closest BK program currently. We've got the partnership with Warren Wilson for a degree in psychology with a concentration in early childhood. And we're seeing some relatively fresh challenges, and some have been in a number of conversations recently where we're talking about workforce development, but we're forgetting the children in that conversation. We need people to work in these classrooms, and that's super important, but we need people who want to work with children. We need people who are invested in working with children, not just, I need to do this because I want a job, I want to do this because I want to work with children. Because that makes a difference in their attitudes, it makes a difference in their staying in the field long-term, it makes a difference in the children. And that's what our goal is, is to make a difference in the lives of children long-term. So we need, I don't know, I get the requests every week from employers in this community saying, hey, I have this position open, hey, I have this position open, can you share it? I always share it. But as we begin to recruit people to meet this shortage of teachers and classrooms, we need to not forget that they need to want to work with children. We can give them all the education, we can give them all the money to go to school, but if they don't ultimately want to work with children, that investment is going to fall short, and it's a struggle to see. We ask our students, students who come and take EDU 119, which for many of you in this room, you know, that is basically the gateway course that is required to work in early childhood. We get students in that course, and we ask those students every time, why are you taking this class? And our instructors give that back to them and say, it's okay to tell me because your boss is making you, because that may be exactly the sole reason you're taking this class. And for some of those folks, they do want to work with children. So taking the class is a challenge because they may have never been to college, they may not have the skills, the reading and writing skills, to be ready for a college level course. But then you've got people who are in there who don't want to be there, and aren't going to be successful in the course, and ultimately are not going to be successful in the field. So as we talk about workforce development, it's super important, we're talking about your grandchild, we're talking about your grandchild, we're talking about children. We need people to work with children who want to work with children. And I've been in several meetings lately, outside of ABPCC, but several meetings lately, that that particular piece seems to be pushed to the side. Well, we've got this great group of people that we want to get some workforce training on. Okay, do they want to work with children? It's very different working with one child, one-on-one, and babysitting than it is working in a classroom with 18, 3, 4, and 5-year-olds, who may have social, emotional learning issues, who may have special needs, who may have complicated life factors. I hear it all the time, I just love children, I've performed hundreds of interviews to hire employees because, I just love children. Have you ever worked with children? There's more to working with children than just loving children. That's a great start, but we need to keep in mind that as we look at workforce development, that we look for the people who are going to want to be in these classrooms longer term. And I happened to come in towards the end of the school system conversation, and she was sitting here, now I can't remember her name, she made the comment that we need to start this recruitment in 7th and 8th grade. And we actually started slightly earlier when 5th graders come to visit ABTEC. It's usually Tamara Reynolds, who is my partner in crime, and my one other full-time employee in my department, but we make an effort to be at every event, to participate in every tour, starting with 5th graders. That's where workforce development starts. We need to work in other areas too, because the crisis is we need employees now, and those 5th graders aren't ready now. But we've got to start that there, but we've also got to find the people who want to work with children, because that's the only way they're going to stay in this field and do right by children.
I'd like to, first of all, thank the commissioners for your investment in the pre-K expansion, the childcare expansion at the YWCA last year. And just let you know that the transformation of that space and what is happening in the classroom is night and day compared to last year. Members of the committee will know that I've been the squeaky wheel around the 18 children in the classroom versus 24. As a licensed five-star childcare center, we could have up to 24, and the best practice is 18. And, you know, I could still say, well, the difference between those six slots is $54,000 per classroom. So just to remind you that. But we are doing 18 in those four classrooms, and I can tell the quality of care is exponentially better, and it is calmer, there's fewer tears, there's more laughter, there's more creativity. So I just want to say to everyone who I've been the squeaky wheel about, yes, 18 is better than the quality of care. We agree, and I never doubted that. I know it's better for the kids, I know it's better for the teachers. But I do want to remind you of losing $54,000 per classroom, of what we get from private pay or vouchers, is really hard. If we want to have people who love children, they need to be paid fairly. And so we are struggling between still not having a living wage for our entry-level workers. And that is our goal at the YWCA, to be able to increase the wages of the people who are taking EDU, EDU 119, and committing themselves by getting them to stay with us. So we're going to be coming to you for more support to maintain and increase the investment in the staff that we have, who are doing great jobs, and I can already see, you know, and they're sparking because they love the new space, they love the ratios, they love the kids. But thank you for having a broad approach to this, so that'll be both expansion and then keeping these existing investments going, because we can't pass that cost on to the parents, we all know that. It already costs more than college tuition for in-state at UNCA to send your kid to preschool, or certainly with an infant. I will also say that we still have over 160 families in the waiting list, birth infant to toddlers, and that continues to be a huge crisis, as we are also part of the pre-K expansion, that is what we see. But we're very grateful for the support from the county. And I do apologize, I'll be screwed out in five minutes, but I wanted to share that. And I will, we are working on some more analysis per classroom of what this challenge is between the living wage, the higher wages of what that breaks down, but I will provide that at another time.
Thank you. I'd love to jump in for a second, just again, express appreciation, it's great to just be hearing from folks, you know, concerns, ideas, visions, the whole, the whole, I love it. One thing I want to just put on the table is, I think we have a pretty pragmatic recognition that 3.6 million dollars is about a tenth of what would probably be required to truly transform the system and maintain that. And a frame that I, at least for me, that's like one theme, the funniest idea is that at its best, it can be an accelerant to help pilot and expand those strategies that we know are, or that you all believe could work, but have kind of resources to, and resources have been so restricted because of guidelines and regulations, and it's impossible to deploy them towards these ideas that you think can work. So I think, and I love the vision here, Amy, and to me, this describes what I understood ABPCC to be doing, in the sense of looking at the total systems view, and looking at, and seeing, just to sort of jump in, and I hope we go back and forth like this, is seeing the 3.6 million as a new feature in the local system. But 3.6 isn't enough to do this. And our hope, I think, is that there, and I go to phrase it, our expectation is that there is sort of the expert, folks in the field who have that long-term, that view, that big picture view, and are thinking strategically about how through collaborations and coordinated approaches and multi-year requests, how to deploy 3.6 million dollars that's coming online here, and how to think about the dogwood money that may be coming online, towards scaling that up. So I think this is a great vision. I think where I would, I want to be as transparent as possible, where I would differ in my analysis is that the county fund fits, I have like spatial dyslexia, fits as a piece in the puzzle that can augment and complement and hopefully make, put immediate fuel in the tanks to be moving the needle on things like, like when we look at other communities that are making the commitment to do universal pre-K, DC, New York City, they're doing signing bonuses, they're doing tuition support, they're doing coaching, they're doing as many things as possible to make this an attractive viable career path. So those are the kind of strategies that I would fully expect to be hearing from community partners about how we start to have some breakthroughs and sort of move the needle on some of these issues that have felt attractive. So I just kind of want to point that out there, sort of my analysis on that is that I, it's sort of a yes and, like... I, it's sort of a yes and, like, this is awesome and I hope what we build and create supports this.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I definitely recognize that three point six million is no way going to strengthen, build on and advance all of those systems. Yeah, totally. And so my remark about being sure that we leverage other resources, our ways that we can address some of these things, that, you know, the really clearly teacher compensation strategies, that, that is huge. So just want to remind folks that there is new money coming down the pipe this coming fiscal year from the state for NC pre-K expansion. But, you know, we can't take advantage of that if we don't have the teachers and we don't have the space. So really happy that the like, the, you came on board with the neighboring, and we're doing all we can to cultivate new providers, but it's, you know, for some providers, that's a big, that's a big step up. So we've been engaged in advocacy work at the state level to see if some of those funds earmarked for expansion. This is an issue across the state, money is being sent back across the state because counties can't expand. So the advocacy effort, call to action to legislate, is can you take portion of those funds for expansion and put them into the reimbursement rates? And be sure that there's, they're listening.
That's great.
Yeah, so building on that and then also just to make you aware of another, another opportunity that is to help teachers supplement their wages is a new statewide program that launched in December called the Toddler Awards. And that is recognition that, hey, only eight percent of children, infants and toddlers are in licensed care, recognizing that it costs more. Those teachers, Jennifer spoke to the, having teachers who want to be there and are well-educated, that it really takes preparation for the toddler teachers. Yeah, I'm just hoping. So what the awards program does is something that Bunkham Partnership for Children has really been working at getting the word out. And this money that comes from the state, we don't have to put the funding in there to give the supplement directly to infant and toddler teachers twice a year.
That's great.
So, and that money is going to continue, it's in the child development and block rate. So we need to be sure that we're all getting the word out about that. In the meantime, Bunkham Partnership for Children is investing in the wages program to continue to serve three to five-year-olds and two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars of that for supplements. So we need to look at other ways to increase wages. We don't expect this fund necessarily to do that, although we could sink down the pipe of the way in which the county supports shared salaries with the supplement. And we can't take families out of this equation, but we know make it easier for families to enroll, you know, clearly affordability is huge, but we have a lot of different great providers in this community, about a strong Head Start system, NC pre-K system, including public providers, private. We, we've begun doing work with some partners in the community about how to have a single portal of entry for subsidy scale. Let's make it easier for families, let's educate everyone how to do this. And that, you know, those are the kind of larger efforts that, that would be a huge amount of money, but it's going to take something. So I think we, you know, let's not forget families here, let's not forget that they need, we don't care what space at their schools is really important, but that's a school day. So it is looking bigger and that not, you know, what we expect from the three point six million in one year is not what we're hoping that can be achieved three years out on this money, on support, limited support, get some support from the business community, state initiatives and.
One minute we'll be back. No, go. So when I heard Jennifer and also Chuck saying, you know, all the intentionality and efforts that we put, right, to everything that I've heard around the table, I also want to mention that barriers to get in with all the different funding sources is the most ridiculous, and I'm going to just put it out there with all caps, I mean, navigation system ever. Right? So we have these thoughts or whatever, can you, can you recruit some of those in the community? And I'll go knock on doors, I'm everybody excited, and then to go through the process, folks are kind of like, never mind, oh, too bad. It is just too intense. It is, because, and I didn't understand the process, Don explained it to me, I had Amy explain, I mean, they've explained it to me nine hundred times and I'm still kind of like, I went to college, this is myself. I feel worried about, I wouldn't do it, right? And so we need to look at, you know, addressing those barriers, because while we're saying, we have some thoughts or whatever, who is being the most impacted? And also, we take it all the time to make sure that we have the legitimacy in all of our work and we also know, right, when we take it back to the school system, what is the achievement that happened? Right? So who is it exactly we're talking about? We're talking about all kids, yet some kids with access are still missing. And so when we're, when we're having all the conversations, I just want to throw back in there that sometimes all of the restrictions impact all families, but it definitely impacts the black families the most. And I was, I could not leave here without saying that, because I'm in it and I hear it every single day. And if some of us know how to navigate, how to enroll your child and you barely can do it, imagine for a grandma or someone that does not have any of this language or whatever. And then I heard you say, Ernie, you mentioned about creativity, we have a lot of black assistants in the classrooms that love babies and want to be, right? But we have so many restrictions that if you don't have this paper and this, whatever, what about some, while we're talking about creative, how creative can we be? And like, do we really want to do that? And what would it look like? And I don't know, I don't have the power to do it, because if I did, I would have already died. But I just kind of want to put it out there, to be really looking, that there are so many barriers to this piece that is horrific. And I just have to put it out there of how bad it really is, because I hear it every single day.
Thank you for sharing that and particularly pointing a lens on racial equity and the disparity issues that we know are there, it's so important to keep that at the center of these conversations. Concretely, there are two things that came up in our schools conversation, I want to make sure to reference in response to what you said, Martina, also Amy, something you mentioned. One is that part of the intent with this funding pot is that it will not carry the restrictions away. You know, that it's sort of in the parlance of foundation funding, this is like general operating funding. And we hope that one thing that can do is help open up some possibilities, get some funding into families, to community members, to models, to strategies, to approaches that may otherwise be hard to braid funding together for. And, you know, if you all are seeing an opportu, I mean, if there is an idea that formulates around, we do know that there are teacher assistants and many of them are black folks who, there might be some opportunities around, you know, if that blossoms into an idea, I think that's exactly the kind of idea that we hope to hear in applications from Florida. The other piece, Amy, just respond to something you said that did come up, is that I think in this, there's also a recognition that, and this is part of the, what's articulated as investing in strategies to help the system scale up, is that advocacy and coalition work are part of this. And that it takes, you know, doing smart advocacy work around the reimbursement rate and how funding is allocated at the state level, takes time and energy and resources and takes funding. And I have understood from the start or anticipated that part of what we're hearing from the community is requests for support for precisely this work. The work of figuring out how to significantly expand early childhood access in Bunkham County is a major project unto itself that ADPPC has been deeply engaged in for years. So I anticipated there would be proposals to continue and take that work to the next And that advocacy is a viable strategy in that. So I hope, I mean, I can speak just for myself here, there will be a committee, the board of commissioners will be ultimately making these decisions, but I want to be really transparent about kind of the advocacy board, which is that we're finding ways to put this money to use that looks different than other kinds of funding that's available. And it recognizes that, you know, that there, that the people who are going to, I did, the people who are going to figure out how to change this in ten years, if we change it, are folks who are deeply immersed in it and have that vision and are doing precisely this. We're not trying to create more, so anyway, I think I just answered that one, I want to make sure to get those two out for you please.
Thank you. I wanted to just follow up on the comment that Don had made in our earlier session this morning that really resonated with me, she commented that we want to be sure that while certainly the public school system will be seeking support and is a really critical part of our early education landscape in the community, that we don't want anything that's, any investments made in the public school system to be harming any other providers that are not within the public school system. So that was really constructive and for me, what it called to mind was that this is an incredible opportunity for our entire community to be not worrying about our own bottom lines and our own work, but to remember that we're all here because we care about children and families and their success. And so if we're all starting from that point, then we can not be nitpicking about, I'm going to try to get that, I'm going to try to get that funding source, but that if we can maintain our shared commitment to the children and to the work that we're doing collaboratively, then that is going to foster even more opportunities for us to think creatively and work outside the box and find ways that we can build up our teacher streams together in ways that we already are doing. And I think it's really powerful. And the fact that there are multiple funding streams available to us and that's, there are so many different pieces that we all have knowledge around. And so there is this one pot of funding, but there is also the Dogwood Health Trust and certainly early care and education is an important social determinant of health along with all of the other supports that are being supported by that work to support our families. So I just hope that we will always all be thinking, how can we collectively be the one that will raise all folks? And I think that is how we're going to accomplish some really great community solutions. And to that end, I would just underline one comment that Amy made in her opening comments. I know the committee has, the structure of the committee and the proposed membership of the committee makes a ton of sense the way it is, but I would, certainly the list of others that could be part of those conversations, I think it is really important to have even louder voices of those who really are truly knowledgeable about the early education on that committee. I totally understand the idea of conflicts of interest and the needing to be sure that we're not over-influencing the pot, but that's the whole, I would recommend at least one member of the Bunkham Partnership for Children to be part of the committee because of, they're doing work with every provider and public and not public in the community and doing the advocacy work at the state level and understanding all the funding streams, the level of knowledge that is inherent with Bunkham Partnership for Children's work. I think if I was going to add one more committee member, it would be a member of Bunkham Partnership for Children because of the broad spectrum of their work. So I would just put that forward as a suggestion, consideration.
If I may, I have a little bit to say, I'm trying to do it really quickly, so I'll sort of have some time to converse, but I want to just cover some scale, we've talked a little bit about creative funding, cover some scale, talked about some funding, some staffing and then children and families. And so one of the things, I work for Communication Opportunities Head Start, we start five hundred and fifty-two children in Madison and Bunkham Counties, primarily Bunkham County, four hundred and seventy-four of those are in Bunkham County, eighteen of those are supported by Bunkham County Schools. In order to do that, we get four point eight million dollars of federal funding, we use eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of NC pre-K funding, we use three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of CCF, federal food program spending, a hundred and thirty-two thousand from Bunkham County, and then we get one point two million dollars of non-federal match. And most of that's in space through our providers and our partners in the community, Bunkham County Schools, Ashland City Schools, Madison County Schools, the Asheville Housing Authority. And so it really is critical to braid that funding together to make it all work. And so a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar investment that Bunkham County had, combined with some Head Start funding, NC pre-K funding and our Child and Adult Food Program, allowed us to serve eighteen children and families that would have not otherwise been served. And out of the, we still have, out of that, there's eighteen, seven were duly enrolled with NC pre-K, all were considered Head Start children. We still have twenty-nine children on that waiting list. Out of those eighteen children, thirteen families were under, one hundred percent of the poverty level, one was over one hundred percent of the poverty level, but that indicates a higher need of that child family. Three were homeless and one was on public assistance. Eight African-American, eight white, one Pacific-aller and one multination. Over three thousand meals have been served to those children so far this year. And then out of those, the other challenge with supporting children and families is ensuring family support, but also child health. And so all of those children, all eighteen children are on Medicaid, seven get WIC, all eighteen have physicals, immunizations, dental exams, developmental screenings, vision screenings, hearing screenings, speech and language screenings, nutrition screenings, do growth assessments, and we do home visits and parent-teacher conferences four times a year. And so all of that happened because of the funding that Bunkham County put into our system, the children would not have been served otherwise. But it also took NC pre-K funding and Head Start funding, CCF funding, and I totally forgot we're in a space provided by Bunkham County. So that's, that's a good function there. The, a couple of thoughts is that the other thing is what the children and families, that the Bunkham County funding will target. We each sort of have our own targets. So Head Start, ninety percent of the children and families, we sort of have to be under one hundred percent of the federal poverty level, which is really, really low. But NC pre-K can be up to seventy-five percent of state median income, which is approximately about two hundred percent of the federal poverty level. And then we have the subsidy funding coming in from the federal government to the state to the local government to support working children and families and lots of other priorities in that. And then we have private pay. So it really takes a combination of all those funding sources to be able to meet the scale of universal childcare. Getting on to space, one of the biggest things for us is that we're in over twenty elementary schools in Bunkham County, including the Bunkham County Schools and Ashland City Schools. And as the state has implemented the new class size reduction, it's very, it is putting pressure on the school system, which puts pressure on us. So we're faced with losing space, which means the ability to serve children in the communities that they will be going to school in. And I think that's one of our strengths in the community that we provide and in our partnerships with the schools is that we're trying to have children go to the schools where they go to. And that transition to kindergarten is just so much smoother. Their families are comfortable walking into school and talking to the teachers, their children are comfortable walking the halls, and it just makes that a lot smoother. The other thing is staffing, staffing has been a real crisis for us this year. We've lost over six new teachers this year since school started, and that's unprecedented for us. They've all gone for a variety of reasons. We've been very fortunate to be able to hire most of those back. But we've also had a shortage of teacher assistants and teacher assistant substitutes. We're really pleased to be, we're having conversations about partnering with the Partnership Substitute Initiative and the training, but I mean, that's just really critical for us. We've got to have the high-quality staff to support our classrooms. Then the last thing is the children and families. Head Start really has a philosophy of school readiness for children and also has a strong parent input and family and community engagement. And those are the philosophies that Communication Opportunities brings to the table and Head Start brings to the table in terms of getting parent guidance and family guidance and a planning process of looking at community needs and then being able to design our program to meet local community needs. And that's one of the best things about this large eight to nine billion dollar federal program, is they tell us what we have to do, but they don't tell us how to do it. So we have a lot of opportunity to design that at the local level and get input from a lot of different folks and use those funds to serve the children and families with the highest needs first. That's a little bit about us and what we do. And so I'm looking forward to continuing the conversations and having creative funding and just want to thank you all so much, first of all, for your support and commitment to our classrooms at Johnson Elementary School, but just the amazing support of creating a committee, putting in funding and moving forward. There's a passionate group of people to support all that work and so thank you.
I want to offer a quick time check, because some folks need to leave on a hard stop at eleven-thirty and it's almost coming past eleven now. What questions do commissioners have to follow up or thought-based anything you've heard so far? What questions do commissioners have to follow up or thought-based anything to put so far?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
I want to let everybody know, back when this $3.6 million come out, I was one that believes in early childcare. I'm very passionate about it. Myself and Jasmine got together when we first came on to what we wanted to do, not knowing what I was getting into. Has been very educational for me. But what I have learned today in both of these meetings is, I was one of the commissioners, and I'm so glad that I have two commissioners here, that kept persuading that we need the 3.6 million. When I see 3.6 million, I think about a penny that we're raising our property taxes to cover. Well, I have already seen, that is going to be very easily offset now, is that we put a bone out here, if we were to went with, what was it, we were to swap 1.2 million.
I think that came up in the conversation.
Yeah. I want everyone here to know where I'm at, is I'm very proud, now, I did vote for the 3.6, but I was so optimistic about over a two-year period. I am not optimistic about now. I know that we made a very wise decision of putting a bone out here for you to work. Yeah, 3.6, 7.2 is not going to take care of this. But it was an incentive to get everyone involved to say, okay, we see now the county is ready to start, now let's do this right. So thank y'all, and Jasmine, Al, and the other one. Thanks for beating someone this hard head over.
Thanks for voting for it.
I'd like to say, as someone who was on the fence about stepping into the trenches and starting a center, which I never thought I'd be an admin, having the county and everyone that's in this room be behind it, allowing me to kind of put the armor on I needed to, is the hardest thing I've ever done. I'm not surprised that a lot of people do not open centers. It isn't everything, but what I've learned is that this community is behind us, and they need it so bad. I mean, I asked a question, what do you know about the pre-K crisis? Everybody has a connection to it. And so I just really want to thank you for all your hard work in everyone in this room, and you're giving a lot of hope and light to something that's been always in my heart, I've always wanted to do, but I never knew it was possible. And I'm still not sure how it's possible, but I know it is. So thank you. Appreciate it.
You know, I'm one, I'm one who said from the start, I was on the other side from Robert, because I don't feel that 3.7 is enough, but it is a start, we'll get there. But one of the concerns that I hear that came up, and I agree with Jennifer, when you see people who are going into the early childhood business, one of the problems though is that I've talked to a lot of people who really care about kids, but they have another problem. They've got to eat, eat, they've got to feed their family, they've got mortgages to pay. We aren't paying them enough money. The people who would like to stay in and be there can't afford to do it. And that's another issue. I think that's why a lot of people are not going in teaching today, they, not because they don't care about the profession or what they do, but it's what they earn, you know, to take care of families. And when you look at Buncombe County folks, we're not living in the cheapest neighborhood in the state, let's face it, it's expensive. And my wife always said, we talk about that, she survived 34 years in life because she had a partner who was working too, you know, with both of us working together. But that is what's critical. But the other piece, that what we're doing today is what we wanted to do. We want to use our 3.7, or hopefully more down the road, just as a spark to, hopefully we can parlay this into a lot more money. The state will see how important what we're doing. Hopefully in Washington, we'll talk about hard years, that's probably. But if they can see what we're doing and look down, we've got to set example, but we can't afford to sit back anymore and do nothing. And when we mentioned earlier upfront, collaboration, we all got to work together. You know, we only have the funds, it's restricted what we have, but we've got to use it smarter. We've got to do that in, in order to be successful. And a lot of them are successful at what you're doing now. You know, I didn't hear anything this morning that surprised me, because we expected what we're hearing. But we're going to have to, the one thing I do think though, that we've got to do, we've got to be more innovative. You know, we can't just keep going by the rules as they are. And I can tell you, from being who I am, if I'd gone by the rules as they are, word, I wouldn't be where I am today. So we've got to push the envelope, we've got to change. Just because we've been doing some things the same way for 20 years, or we're doing it now, these are the barriers that give in our way when it comes to our kids. These are the barriers that are causing the achievement gap. So I hope that we have been successful, if nothing else, this morning, in starting the conversation that's going to get us where we need to be. And my idea, you said earlier, nothing is carved in stone. We're in some cases probably too flexible in what we're starting on, but we are real, we are open to change, and we want to do things, our goal is to be successful. And you know, with me, I'm the most impatient one here, I think. By coming from the corporate world, I'm used to getting things done, the bottom line. We say, hey, we want to do this by the end of the year, it's done. You know, and the people in, and the way who did get them done, we moved, moved on, and got people who did. But we can't do that in government, obviously. We work in a different environment. But I want to see us be successful at what we do. And all of us, we're going to listen to the input from everyone. I mean, that's why we're here. And unfortunately, I'm one, you know, I'll tell you, if I don't go along with it, hey, that doesn't make sense, but show me why it does, you know, we go along. But thank you for coming out, I appreciate it, and this isn't the last you hear from us.
After the session, you can always contact me, you can always contact any of these three commissioners. We also have a last top line, if people want to put comments in, or just general to the county or name. One thing that we need to make sure that we're doing in commissioner subcommittees is building a place for public comment. So once the committee is formed and has a regular meeting structure, we always have a public comment section incorporated into that agenda, which means today we also need to have that incorporated into our agenda. And so if there's anybody that would like to make a contribution, that hasn't yet, may do so at this time. Mr. Rex.
You know, what I look around here and see, I see the corporate world sitting out here. The people that are affected by this is the one is not being heard. Organizations, they bring information, it's good, but it's really not getting down to the people that we are talking about. One of the things I, or four things I'd like to bring to your attention, and this is giving you an illustration of the last 20 years. In DSS, the numbers have averaged 1,600 kids coming into the Department of Social Service over here. DJJ, look at the numbers on it. Special education for kids, keep rising. Buncombe County has had one of the largest groups of nonprofits working with children in 20 years, I mean, the largest number of nonprofits. In the last 20 years, the poor has grown bigger and bigger. I ask for city schools for the last 20 years, have changed many school superintendent, many programs put in place, and the achievement gap is still the worst in the state. If the numbers that I shared are not going down, how is pre-K investment going to get off of the ground? And where is the people's voice that are affected, and will they be heard? And the big question, who is being profited by this? The people that are being profited for the last 20 years is certainly not the people that you're talking about right now. There's a handful of people that are getting the profit off of this, and it's people that can advocate for themselves. The people that are in these numbers I'm talking about is people that we should be caring about and talking about to move the needle for them, which has not been moved in 20 years. And I'll debate that with anybody. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Thanks again for this opportunity, and again, thanks for the support for this vision of this fund. I think it's great to hear the conversation, I think, the idea of this system strategy and what this fund can actually achieve as a catalyst. I feel like it's very, just good to have, to hear that in space. Question I really have is, back to the committee structure, and just, you know, looking, looking at that, especially kind of comparison to some of the work that Amy did with the partnership, and looking, she based a lot of that on Durham's model. And I just, I'd just kind of like to have a better understanding of, is the committee there to be the review team for the RFP? Are they, are they there to, you know, really set the three-year plan and kind of the strategy? You know, from this document, it's, it's a little unclear to me still, and I do, I do have some concerns that just, you know, putting, you know, filling these blanks doesn't necessarily like connect the dots between the deep expertise that's been around the advocacy planning table over the last couple of years, and other folks in this room, as well as other stakeholders. And so the question is kind of, how does that, how does that information share, or like, what is the vision that the commission in terms of how like these six people can kind of up to speed on the issues, that they can, you know, follow that Grimes conversation, all through braded funding? Will that be a part of the vetting process to kind of ask their background in this work? You know, and so, that's, that's to me, like, still the question I'll leave here. I feel like it's a great alignment on where we all want to end, what we can do, learn from, and just such deep appreciation for that, that I'm still, just a little, I feel like I need a little more information on kind of that, this prescription of maybe and where it makes me clear.
I just want to echo that, but I think that concern coupled with the really fast timeline is kind of, I get a little concerned about, if this is the committee structure, and you want plans, and I think applications to be submitted as early as March, and you want to start funding in a separate way, I just want to be sure that a lot of this expertise is available to the committee, and that the committee has a pay on for just sort of setting these projects, and reaching out and getting the expertise that they receive has been, has cultivated in everybody's individual careers, and also as sort of fellow on this team that care about the same thing, listening to you guys.
How, please, to commissioners as to whether you want to respond to any of that, or wrap it up and do that as, I'll pick on our time.
I've got it delayed until 11:30.
Yeah, we're doing it at 11:30 right now.
However, those comments had questions, and so I just, I'd love to, for direction to the commissioners on where you want to go next with them.
Just very briefly, I think those are excellent questions. I, I, I hope that you all will, it's a matter of trust, and we are in a process of rebuild, trying to rebuild a lot of trust in one right now. Okay, I see this as one vehicle for doing that, it's no coincidence that the first things this committee did was meet with experts and stakeholders. And I think that's something we will continue doing in a lot of different ways. I, and I, so those are great questions that are being raised around process and intent, there, there is urgency, and that stems from what we've heard from you all for the last two years. This is a crisis. And a belief that there is a way to put 3.6 million dollars to good use, starting in July, for year one of the fund. And I, and I hope you all hear that kind of precision of language in that, is that what we're doing is taking a plane down the runway and lifting it off. We're not talking about year five of the fund, we're talking about sort of the formation of a, of the first iteration of year one of the fund to respond to a crisis, we've heard articulated again and again in different ways. So that to me is in the framing that, I'm happy to be in touch with anyone, you can get my cell, you can be an email text, I'll meet with folks individually, but I, I can't envision a way this work would move forward without the heavy involvement of experts in the field. I also think it's really critical that, that public funding projects are moving forward in a way that's transparent and with minimal conflicts of interest. And those, and that's, that's not just an abstract concern at the county right now, that's a very real concern.
It's real.
It's very, very real concern, that we're putting in place public-facing transparent processes where the folks who are receiving funding are at healthy arms-length from the funding decisions. And, and I can't overstate how critical that is, I think as we begin building out some of the DNA and structure around how the Board of Commissioners does better public-facing transparent work, public decision-making, all of that, is finding what is that right degree of checks and balances between heavy involvement, input, perspective from experts, and also arms-length systems for funding decisions. Have we figured out exactly the equilibrium? Probably not, but we're trying to. And so you all are in a kitchen with us, I would, I would see, concerns are great, keep them coming, we're not trying to pay a terrible bill, we're not, that's invasive back and forth. And building up to a long-term process, it's going to take time, I'm going to focus through one vehicle through which you see, the commission saying, we care about this, we're passionate about it, if it's a crisis, let's act, and then, and figure out together in the community how to keep acting. So I, I'm really excited about the applications we'll get from the committee structure. Because someone possesses one characteristic, it doesn't mean they don't possess another. I assume their parents were part of it, I think that there are, so I think that you can kind of put that in the mix as well, is that these were sort of characteristics that we thought would bring an interesting diversity of perspectives to the table, but it doesn't conclude that someone could have another characteristic that would bring an interesting characteristic to the table. So, so think, think about how we can put together a crack committee that will help die this work towards first, the university, and, and we'll be looking, I think, for ways to have a lot of community involvement and engagement. I'm kind of going on and on, but I want to address, I've heard real concern, we had a great set of conversations this morning, I heard commissioners want to make sure we're addressing them, and keep that dialogue going.